Whenever you're ready.
Call the meeting to order. Let's do the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic. One nation under God, with liberty and justice.
That's it. Now that the IT guy left, let's see what happened. Yeah, it's a delay on the live recording stream. That's what is I shut it off. I mean, I shut the 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 streaming office still recording. Okay.
Well, I'm sure you've all heard about Maureen. So I thought maybe we'd have a moment of silence. Right back to the public participation. You're on.
As you know, the most important thing is that the council has the budget. I don't believe that it negatively affects the senior center at all. I'm sure one way or another, Daniel will be presenting some information about that. The mill rate is set, I believe, at thirty nine point nine eight. That's a point. Eight increase from the last mill rate. Everyone on the council voted in favor of it. There were some on the council who did not. Like the way the project was done and where monies were taken up, but. The end result is that the increase wasn't as much as it could have been. That also, I personally know other people on the council are, we'd like to congratulate you on the nutrition event that you had. A well intended, everyone appreciates the idea and what the end result was, and I know we'll talk about that later. So unless you have any questions about related to council on anything else to add at this time.
What is the situation as far as charging for people to be a member here? I know that we don't charge Newington residents. But I'm a little concerned about people that aren't from the town of Newington because we're not getting any revenue from their towns. By utilizing our services.
That's actually a whole agenda item how right now. So this is a comments on. Yep, yep. And I do have some information on that for you when we get to that agenda item.
Through all of meeting minutes, did everyone get them? I thought they were very good. I wasn't able to be here being in Vietnam. So in the meeting, thank you. Good job, I assume. Any corrections? Anyone have any?
We could make a motion.
Motion to approve less meetings minutes.
All in favor? The staff report?
Okay, we are going to talk quite a bit about the or not quite a bit because I don't scare anybody. We're going to talk a lot about the input session. So I'm not going to talk as much as normal about all the programs. We had another full month of programs that were fantastic and fully attended. And everybody's very busy here. We hosted the library book sale last weekend. And as you can see by our nicely decorated room, we're currently hosting the townwide art show. The most of the building, most of the rooms are adorned with artwork from students, grades kindergarten through twelve and Newington School System. And the multipurpose room, our Newington Art League are displayed, and that's a all ages group. So we will enjoy that through the end of next week, I believe, and there'll be a parent reception here tomorrow night, I think. I should probably check out that. And and from there. So. In terms, in addition to the unfortunate passing of Maureen, we also had one of the members, Elida Starr, did officially resign. Although we learned she was serving de facto, which means that her her appointment had already expired, but. The way it works in Newington is if your seat expires and you're not immediately replaced, you may continue to serve something called de facto until you either decide not to do that anymore. Or the council appoints somebody in your place. Both of the nominating parties for each for each for each party have been notified, so it is up to them to. Make recommendations on who will fill those two empty spots. Those then go to the town council to vote on, and then once they're sworn in, the candidates may serve on the commission. We have one more meeting next month in June. This commission doesn't typically meet in July or August unless there's something pressing. So we may or may not see some new members next month, otherwise hopefully we'll get some in September. We welcomed our new twenty five hour absentee bus driver, Janila Parbo. She is fantastic. She's extremely kind. She has a very calming presence. And she's a very proficient driver. She drove for New schools for a couple of years. She actually drove the the special needs bus for all levels, elementary, middle, and high school. And she also was previously a job coach for special needs adults. So she has a lot of experience. She's an excellent driver. And she's she's learning very quickly and fitting in very quickly, which is awesome. We are going to utilize. So we received over sixty applications for that job. So we're looking at some of the stronger ones to fill that nineteen hour a week position that's been vacant for some time. Once that's filled, we can proceed with some of the programs and ideas that we'll talk about in a little while. The town manager a couple of weeks back appointed me me to be the municipal veteran representative for Newington for the state of Connecticut. And what that means is I am now the official point of contact for any kind of veteran seeking any kind of services. I could point them in the direction of any assistance that they might need, link them with resources, et cetera. There is a statewide mandatory training on June thirteenth for all municipal veterans representatives that I will attend. Once I've completed that and I'm certified, then we will get the word out to the public. So that there's kind of it's it's along the lines of the no wrong door. Concept where you can go anywhere, you can reach out to anybody and they'll tell you where to go. They will say, oh, sorry, this is the senior center, not the Veterans Hospital, you know, kind of thing. So very excited about that. Have a lot to learn, but I will. Thank you. So I mentioned the activities. We had tons of them. They're all very well attended. We had a really couple of fun luncheons. We recently had an Under the Sea Luncheon. Which was fun, just a lot of activities. We just had a Cinco de Mayo celebration with a kind of band, was it? Veriachi Band? Yeah. And not all call it margaritas and nachos, and it was really really fun and well attended. And a couple of people even danced. Yeah, it was great. We will talk a little bit about the nutrition stuff and the nutrition fundraiser a little later in the agenda. And I know I'm rushing through this very quickly. That's because I wanted to spend a couple of minutes talking about our input session. So I'm going to pass these out. One, two, three, four. Sorry. You look at the past those tattoos. One for Councilor Nagel, too. This is a very brief summary of a lot of input and a lot of work that has gone into this. What we learned and what our next steps are. We received over two hundred and fifty individual suggestions. And input and feedback, most of which were from the input session, but some people emailed us or called us or stopped in with, you know, things too. So I put all that into a spreadsheet and then I deleted all the duplicates because there was a lot of duplicate. Or a lot of where there's several people asking for the same information or requesting the same requesting the same things. So I we had done it in the input session. We did strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats. That was part one. And then part two was kind of everybody gave us suggestions about what they want to see. In this summary, because I don't want to be here for hours, I did not put. Opportunities or threats because most of the opportunities were actually duplicated in these suggestions or in these strengths or weaknesses. And ninety nine percent of the threats all said funding from the federal government in some way, form, or the other. So I didn't include these in here, but they will be in the final report and in our strategic plan. That's going to be the eventual outcome of this. So strengths, if you notice on your sheet, that's the first page. Anything that's in bold are things that multiple people indicated. Okay, so. I mean, the program reminder calls, they like our social workers, they like our free exercise programs, our professional staff, our great location. Interesting and informational classes. The top responses were that we were low or no cost for membership and for programs. The helpful friendly staff, which we try very hard, and the variety of programs. So that's a very, very basic overview of the strengths. The next page was the input they received on our weaknesses. Again, ones in bold are things that people, multiple people mentioned. The top responses on our weaknesses, some of these were very specific, like things that like certain people, like some people didn't like the coffee, that kind of thing. But the most the most mentioned weaknesses are that we don't have any evening or weekend programs, which I'll touch upon in a minute. We need more outdoor programs and day trips, not like the bus trips through our bus company, but things like through our senior disabled center, like dial a ride going to local restaurants. Or yard goats games or, you know, museums or parks or whatever. And then our registration process can be confusing for programs, especially for Silver Sneakers, which is its own kind of. Being that's very difficult to register for. So those are the most listed weaknesses, which again I'll address in a minute. Any questions so far?
I just wanted to say for the Silver Sneakers, because I I went around to a lot of the different tables, I think it was more so the, not that it was hard to sign up for. But it was the process and the process of getting new people.
Correct, which again, this is kind of a high level summary, but yes, we have all that information, all that details, and we are addressing that. So then, again, we went into asking people for their specific ideas. And we received many, 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 many ideas. So again, this is a summary. It doesn't include every word, you know, five people requested trips to the yard goats, five people requested painting classes. I didn't include that in here. I summarized. You'll notice a couple of different things here. Again, items in bold were popular, submitted many times. There are items with asterisks after them are things that we already offer. That were suggested as programs. And again, I'll get to that in a minute. And the items with the little i in parentheses. Are items that we're actually already planning or in progress, but we haven't started them yet. So the top responses for program service resource ideas is. The outdoor day trip local programs. And again, I had pages and pages of specific suggestions. Like I said, go to the yard goats, go to the Wasworth-Atheneum, go to Casodoro. That type of thing. We have some seed money funding to start in the what we were calling the adventure club, which is basically just what people are suggesting in here. In which we provide those trips, a couple hours, maybe during the day to these places. At lower no cost because again, we have some seed money to to cover those fees right now. We would also negotiate for reduced costs and fees for places that we go. Take advantage of any kind of like discounts or whatever they might have, or maybe perhaps a sponsor for the program. But we have the money to get this started, and I'd like to start it over the summer. We have a bunch of ideas, mostly from the input session, where we might go, anything from beaches and state parks to. Like I said, restaurants, museums, sports, activities, that type of thing. The last thing that we need to actually start that is a third bus driver, that nineteen hour a week bus driver. Because with our two drivers now, our newly filled twenty five hour week and our full timer, they're just doing medical appointments, grocery shopping, you know. Things like that all day long, and there's not a four or five hour, two or three or four hour block for them to go and and do activities, especially if they're going like. Down to the shore or somewhere where they can't come back and drive around, you know, during the program. So as I mentioned earlier, that nineteen hour a week position hopefully will be filled soon. It has been it has been budgeted for the past couple of years now. So it's not a budgetary item. It's just been vacant because it's been universally difficult to hire part time bus drivers. All of the senior centers in the area are looking for them. But once we get somebody, then that person will also do doctor's appointments and everything else. But if. Once or twice a month, we're doing what we're calling an adventure trip, a day trip, then that third driver would do that trip. So that's kind of the missing piece right there. But other than that, we've actually done a lot of planning on that and will be excited to go. Evening offerings came up a lot because we have disabled adults who may work during the day who are younger and haven't retired. We have older folks, younger, older adults who still work. And we even have older, older adults who are back in the workforce or haven't retired, or maybe just prefer evening times. So that was a long, a lot of suggestions there. We are going to start in June. Our first evening program is going to be June sixteenth, to be determined, the program. Barbara and I are going to take turns working the nights. Barbara's going to do the first one because that happens to be my twenty fifth anniversary with my husband, so he'd be kind of mad if I worked. And what we're going to do is we're going to open the center for drop in activities like we would during the day, such as the TV lounge, puzzles, computer lab, the billiards. Anything that we have open during the day that's dropping, that you don't have to pre-register for, we're going to have that open. And then we're going to offer one to two special programs each evening to be determined. We're going to do it once per month to start, just so we can kind of get our bearings and test the water to see how it goes. And then we hope to expand it from there. Right now, with very few resources and no budget for this, again, it'll be the staff that's willing to work nights, and I have no problem doing that. And nor does Barbara. So we're excited about that, and Maureen will come up soon. And the third one's pretty general. The top response is a lot of people wanted more craft classes. So we're on the hunt for craft classes if anybody has any ideas. The programs and services go on to the back as, I'm sorry, the the suggested programs go on to the back as well. But those are our top three. Any questions or thoughts on that or?
I just wanted to at least let you know, I I checked my schedule just now, but at least for the first couple, because I was also trying to. Behind the idea of the evening class, especially here, you know, the disabled population of members. So I'll help you in the beginning too. Tell me what you need and I can come back to it.
And if this catches on and it goes well, then eventually we could even offer like social work appointments in the evenings. And Terry right now, she's already so great that if somebody can't come in till five or six o'clock, she'll just stay. But if we make it so that it's known that that we're available, then, you know, if we can offer office assistants, that type of thing. Basically, anything we offer during the day with the exception of like lunch and, you know, that type of thing, then. Then, you know, we'll go ahead and do that and we'll see how it goes.
Sounds like it was very positive.
It was. I mean, you know, there are people who had constructive. Constructive criticism and suggestions, but I think it was fun. People seemed to enjoy the activities. There was a lot of great input, very constructive, a lot of great ideas. So the last page is our takeaways. Our key takeaways were that members are generally pleased with our programs and services. They cite a variety of programs. Low to no cost membership and services, strong staff and communications as strengths. If somebody has copies with some copy notes on it, I'll take it back. Otherwise, it's okay, I'm doing it. And then, I'm sorry, I just want to make sure because I had this all written out and I didn't want to forget any things. Yeah, I have handwritten notes on my copy, which I, oh, here it is. Okay. Members would like to see more outdoor, local day trips, outdoor programs provided by the center, evening programs, weekend programs. Which we're not quite there yet, but that might be more of a long term thing, and more crafts and socials. They'd like to see easier and more equitable opportunities to register for popular programs. Silver sneakers is mentioned a lot, but basically in general. There are many, many, many suggestions and ideas for activities that we currently offer at the center. So all those things in it in with the asterisk after them are things that people suggested that we already do. So that.
Yes, that's what the.
So that indicates that we need to do a better job of communicating what we currently offer and serve, right? And what we currently have. Not only to our current members, but to like the town in general, right? So we want the town in general to know that we exist. And as Diane Stone always said, we can't accommodate all ten thousand older adults in Newington because, you know, they wouldn't fit. But we do want to make sure that people know that we exist and that we have services available. So we are, as one of the things we're already working on, we are already working on putting together an information campaign. That's going to go out both with things specifically for current members and general things out to the public, which will also be bilingual. And presented in many forms, paper and electronic, social media, newspapers, things of that nature. And I'm skipping ahead a little bit, but this information campaign is going to be held in conjunction with a membership meeting that we're going to have in July. And the membership meeting will be the kickoff of the new fiscal year, but also it will be where we kind of discuss this and where we're going with it. It will also be the kickoff of our center's fortieth anniversary celebration. So if you were here early, Karen was explaining how she was instrumental in actually getting the senior center established back in nineteen eighty five. And so it opened in nineteen eighty five, so it's our fortieth anniversary. So we thought we'd roll out again this information campaign, this membership initiative. Excuse me, and a series of programs and celebrations that will have conjunction with our fortieth anniversary. Our next steps, other than what I just said, we are in the process of creating a member survey. To get feedback on like the suggested activities from a wider audience. So, you know, somebody suggested that we do a book club. Okay, we can definitely do a book club, but I want to make sure that more than one person is interested in doing a book club before we put out that effort. So we'll get that membership survey out. We will continue to work on those in progress new programs, such as the evening offerings, the adventure club. We're putting together a maker space, you know, all the things that we're already working on that were suggested that are kind of in the process, but we haven't announced them yet. We're going to use all of the input and the raw data that that you don't have, but that we have to create short and long term goals, our strategic plan. And that will align with our budget, our resources, and our mission. And the caveat on that is that our priorities, we constantly reassess our priorities like on a day to day basis, and they change often. A lot of that has to do with some challenges that we're facing with funding. So of course, and that I'll get to the council part in a minute, but of course, you know that nutrition is our main concern, and quite honestly, it is another full job right now that a couple of us split. So that's always going to be a priority for us is to make sure that we are funded and we are offering nutrition. We also have some information that we were talking a little bit about before the meeting from the National Council on Aging. On some services at the in the proposed federal year twenty six budget that could end up affecting not our budget specifically, but older adults in the area. So that's something that we always keep an eye on, and we will always kind of continue to reassess and reprioritize. So if maybe, you know what, we can't quite get to. Having some more craft classes or having a social planned because we're busy, because, you know, we've already changed course twice just on social security. You know, with issues with people getting to the social security office because they no longer took telephone appointments. So we planned something to to address that, and then they pulled it back. So we're always kind of being pulled in different directions. Just quickly, before I get too far off topic, some of the things that may be reduced in the federal fiscal year twenty six budget. Could include reductions to falls prevention, chronic disease self management education, which we do a lot of. And Alzheimer's disease initiatives. It moves the funding. To a different department, but eliminates those things that I just mentioned. It also can cut, could affect the CDC and the Substance Abuse and Mental Health Services Administration, which is all ages, but could certainly affect old adults. There are proposed cuts to of five million dollars to eliminate. The adult protective services support at the federal level and other elder abuse, neglect, and exploitation efforts. It also can reduce the aging disability resource centers, which would be eliminated under this plan. It will eliminate the low income home energy assistance program, which is huge. That's that would be devastating. And the community services block grant. It could also eliminate the CDC Injury Center. So again, that's not going to affect our budget at the center, but it will greatly, if it happens, indeed, the way that it's been addressed here. It will definitely cause us to have to reprioritize what we're looking at here and how we're going to help people find alternative resources. So that's my big caveat on, you know, our short and long term planning. Also, what we do will be have to align with our budget, our resources, and our mission. Where necessary, we're going to explore funding opportunities or community partnerships or in kind activities to help us support these suggested activities and services. And as I already mentioned, we're going to kick off the information campaign, hold that public meeting in July, I'm sorry, the membership meeting in July, and then start our fortieth anniversary year. Any questions? There will be a much more comprehensive report once we finish our strategic plan, but this is kind of your overview for tonight.
Two things? One I look forward about and one statement is. Because you mentioned it, I just want to put in, you know, your body to think about the getting programs with the New England Art League, having one of them come and teach us.
Yep, we already partner with them, but if certainly if they have volunteers who are willing to do so. Then we would be happy to have them.
And then my other question is, so we're going to have a meeting in July to go over this. Do you feel that's too soon? Because I don't know if we'll have all of this implemented yet.
Well, not all of it's going to be implemented immediately. There's short term and long term planning. But we could definitely talk about our strategic plan and what we found out in the input session and what we're doing, where our plans are moving forward. It doesn't say, you know, we're not going to be maybe able to say that we're going to start. Craft programs next month, and then the following month, we're going to have this in this in this program, but we'll give everybody a general overview of what's going on.
Do you have a date in July yet?
No, we need to look at all of our calendars and our vacation schedules.
Wait for the first two weeks.
Jealous, but it's okay. Any other questions or or anything on this? Yeah, we, so that's it for my service and program report.
Next is old business budget update.
Councilor Nagel, as he indicated. Counselor Nagel, as he indicated, our senior center budget was funded fully as requested. Continue to very much appreciate the town council's support for our programming and our services. And they um funded an additional thirteen thousand dollars from the Wheels on Wheels program, which is vital, so we're very appreciative of that, um. That's it.
Nutrition program.
Okay, um, well, we'll talk about the program itself first, we're moving forward, moving on, continuing to look for permanent solutions. I met with, I'm continuing to work with our grant writer. We have applied for about thirty thousand dollars worth of grant funding specifically for nutrition from three different foundations. Um, and we'll hopefully receive that funding. Um, and just, you know, a fair amount of work that goes into applying for the foundation grants, but I think we're going to have a decent chance. Um, we will, she will continue, she's a great resource for for looking for grant opportunities, so she'll continue to do so. As I mentioned, the town council um funded an additional thirteen thousand dollars, we have a couple of new donors on board, a couple of sponsors, um. And I emailed this to everybody yesterday, I think. Tomorrow, the N C triple A, the North Central Area Age and Aging, which is our fiduciary for the program, one of them. Um, is holding a focus group to hear from older adults and it says veterans, which I didn't know about until I got this flyer. Um, it's at the Weathersfield Senior Center tomorrow at twelve thirty. We learned about it Monday night, which is unfortunate because didn't give us any time to really, you know, I'm going to attend. But didn't give us really any time to find people, particularly because it takes place during lunch. So that's a tough sell for people to go, you know, during lunchtime to this, so I'm going to go tomorrow. I'm going to grab a couple of members here, anybody here who's interested in going, please join us at the Weathersfield Senior Center tomorrow at twelve thirty, um. I, as I said, I'll try to get who I can to go, I will discuss as I have been endlessly, our nutrition funding um as a priority. The veterans part again is new to me until they actually just sent me this flyer right before I sent it to you. But certainly that's very important as well, and I'll keep an ear open for that and then I'll report back. I will also ask them, I know, that's not how they presented to us, but it says. Conduct your focus group to hear directly from older adults, particular veterans, so this is specifically, then this is in particular below. They, when they called me for this info, which I before emailed you, they said, oh, we want to hear from older adults, if you have any members, send them over, if you want to go. They didn't even mention veterans until I got this follow up, so I'm going to go regardless. Um, depending on how it goes, I may ask them to hold the focus group here specifically, because I think we have a large contingent of people who want to give their opinions. Uh, because this was last minute and not well advertised, so but at least I'm going to go and see what's going on. So that's it for the funding piece, our dinner was awesome, um, it was a really fun time. We raised, we netted about four thousand dollars after all of our costs. Which equates to about four hundred Meals on Wheels meals or about six hundred and fifty in-person meals. Um, via email, this group talked about some feedback and what we can do next time, which are all good suggestions, so. You know, maybe when the commission is ready in the fall, maybe we can do another one or next year. Um, we will be looking at in-center fundraisers next. One of the good ideas that came out of the input session was to do like a quarterly raffle. Get a, you know, get a decent prize donated from a local business and do a raffle, it's very easy and should, you know, rate and cost nothing. Um, and other ideas that we have for fundraisers, so at a future meeting or whenever, you know, if anybody or just informally, if anybody has any other fundraiser ideas. Um, we'd be happy to have them, everybody did a great job, um, particularly, and I did put a lot of work into this, um, getting. Raffle prizes and setting up and working with the the vendors in the in the site, so I think it went very well. There's tons of positive feedback from everybody who attended. Any questions or anything on that?
I thought it was, it was not only a great job, but it was so much fun. And four thousand dollars for our first fundraiser, I think is excellent.
There's ways we could maybe get a little bit more next time around, but I think for again, for our first try, it was a good, good collection.
I mean, it's hard to advertise, there's no newspapers anymore.
Right, or they cost a thousand dollars to advertise in.
Yeah.
You know, the quarter page ad we put in the um, in the reminder was two hundred and fifty dollars. It's like that takes a pretty big chunk, we gotta sell, you know, five tickets to make that up, yeah, so. You know, we have to be, so, but I think it was very, I think it was well done.
Well, I had a suggestion, H Hartford Association for Retarded Citizens is doing a walk and roll. At Duncan Park on May tenth, it's a fundraiser and it sounds really interesting and it's, I think, only one mile. And they have people in wheelchairs, crutches, canes, whatever. And um and or just people who walk. And I guess you get sponsors or whatever, I don't know, I I'd like to attend it and see what it's all about.
That's great, something, you know, if it if it looks good, something maybe we can do for fundraiser here, yeah.
It would be appropriate for us.
Probably the rain will.
Yeah.
So good.
That's just a suggestion.
Anything else on the fundraiser?
No, good job, guys.
Great job, thank you.
Or people.
What's next?
Volunteer has been updated.
Yep, so it's on May twenty-second, everybody should have received their invitations to it. Um, again, the theme is kind of like the nineteen fifties rock and roll, like volunteers rock um theme. So the staff was in the process of doing all of our normal planning that we do, we're receiving R S V Ps. We are bringing, five thirty, we're bringing back an old tradition to ask the town manager and department heads to come help serve dinner. So I put out the email and the town manager will attend and a couple of department heads will attend as well, which is nice.
That was always fun.
Yeah, and it kind of died out under a previous town manager, so I'm glad that it's it's back now.
See one of the town manager and who else?
So back in the day, the town manager and department heads were invited to come serve the dinner to the volunteers. So I put out the invite again this year. The town council's invited as guests.
As guests.
Um.
Work, but.
We put the town staff to work down on the volunteers and town councils are volunteers, so.
Interest on the S D C fund?
Yep, so we have to, through the beginning of March, because that's the most recent info she has, she hasn't received the March statement yet. Uh, no, it's not right, through the end of March, I'm sorry, we've raised three hundred and seventy-five dollars in interest, which is not bad for a month, free money. Um, we'll be interested to see how it compounds as we move along and we'll get the April and May numbers for the next meeting.
Did we find out there's any stipulations on taking it out?
There are not.
So we could essentially put some more in.
I mean, yeah, she would recommend that we wait a couple of months, see how it goes with all these budgetary, you know, all these changes and all these. Unknowns, but sure, and we'll see why not at this point. If we remain stable.
I think that's great, I mean, we work hard to get three hundred and seventy-five dollars, so, um, door counter.
Let's see, maybe just see the agenda, it's exciting, something, no, okay, the door, it's still on the, it's still on the agenda, um. Uh, before this meeting, um, you recommended doing maybe a letter or an email to the. I T department, if you'd like to do that, I'm happy to send it on your behalf.
Yeah, and C C the town manager, or is that not a good idea?
The staff kind of works together and I really don't want to be the person who C C's the town manager on something unless it's really vital. I know, I know, um, but well, yeah, we could talk about that, sure, um.
Well, let's start with just the I T, you always start at the lowest level anyway.
I will say the outside of this issue, the I T department is extremely supportive of us. We are working on the townwide new website, which will be a huge improvement over the current website, and believe it or not. The senior and disabled center is one of the top hit webpages of all the departments, my gosh, excuse me, um. So. There's that, and they do a lot for us, including, as you saw, the tech support we had right before this meeting, after hours for them, so. Uh, but this is one thing that's just kind of, for whatever reason, has just been for years, just not addressed. Um, and kind of on the same page, I am meeting with the facilities department next week. To learn about what their plans are for the remaining security features that we need to implement in this building, including cameras.
This, I know, this might have gone with the the last messaging, the I T department or. I mean, with the interest for the account, but can we figure out how we can take some credit cards for some things?
That's all run by finance, um, I have a credit card, as you know, for the for the department, and so does Josie, who's our business manager, but. Oh, no.
Wanted to do a donation, their next.
Oh, 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 I'm so sorry, I thought you meant haven't. So that's a strangely difficult thing. Most of it has to do with accounting and finance in the realm of municipal government. It took the Parks Department like three years to get their online system, which really only works for them, it doesn't work great for anybody else. I believe Human Services has a PayPal link, if you want to donate to Human Services, we do not. I asked, no, I asked the finance and I T department, I T said yes, finance said no. So my takeaway from that is maybe Human Services isn't supposed to have one either, but they let them kind of get away with it. We will continue to explore opportunities for that, I looked at a couple of things, a couple of websites that that. Take a, if you were to do a credit card donation or charge like member, you know, uh, fee or something. You would be asked to leave an optional tip which covers the credit card fee so that we don't get hit with it. But all of those universally are only for nonprofits, none of them will take municipal government, I'm guessing because of whatever our accounting procedures are. Um, that's pretty universal, so we'll keep looking out for options and if something comes up, yes, I. A couple of years ago, it wasn't such a big deal, but everybody pays for everything with credit card now, so it is becoming a little bit of a problem.
Uh, new business. Upcoming activities.
So we have a full month of activities, um, tomorrow we have. A class on how to grow potatoes and sacks, which is pretty cool and you can do it pretty easily. On Friday afternoon, I'm hosting a music, a jukebox bingo, um, so fifty sixties and seventies music bingo, it's fun, we'll have prizes. Uh, we have a variety of art and craft programs coming up, including a paint pouring class. Um, on May fifteenth, next Thursday, the deputy assessor. For the town Danielle will be here to talk about the town's real estate revaluation. So if you have any questions about how that works as a town resident, she's very, very informative and she will be happy to speak to you. She came last month to talk about like um homeowners, you know, elderly, older homeowners rebates. And there were a couple of people who needed some help, so she remained after the hour long program for another hour or two, just to talk to those specific people to help them through their needs. Uh, we have karaoke coming up, that was another one of our suggestions. Um, and just a bunch, you know, we do fraud and scams quite often, uh, programs, and we don't do fraud and scams, we do programs about fraud and scams quite often. Um, uh, you know, every other month or so, because you know, unfortunately, the criminals stay one step ahead of everybody else, so we find resources to come in and help people stay informed. And we have one of our L G B T Q movable senior centers program, uh, Lunch and Learn coming up on May twenty-first. Oh, and our A A R P driver safety course, which fills up every, every time we do it, every month.
Membership fees.
Okay, so this addresses Ed's question a little bit. One of the, to the newer commissioners, one of your specific duties on the commission is to set the annual membership fee for the center. Pre-pandemic, Newington residents were charged five dollars a year for basic membership. And out of town residents were charged ten dollars a year for basic membership. In twenty twenty, our building was closed, even though we provide services still. Um, we didn't feel it to be, you know, fair to charge people who can't even come to the building. Of course, continued in twenty twenty-one, in twenty twenty-two, we were partially open and we continued to reopen throughout the entire year. And then in twenty twenty-three and twenty twenty-four, we kept with the waiving of the fees, but asked for donations in lieu of those. Um, so this is your decision. It is not a decision for you to make tonight, it'll be on old business at the next agenda, you would vote on it then, but it's open for discussion tonight. I'm only recommending this because I can, but it's your decision, I would recommend that you continue with that. The waiving of the fees for both residents and non-residents and um soliciting donations in lieu of membership fees, and this is why. We currently have seventeen hundred approximately, because it, it varies, but seventeen hundred and fifty members who live in Newington. And we have about three hundred and seventy-five members who live out of town. Okay, so if we charge those membership fees, this past, this past fiscal year started on July first and then on June thirtieth. Then we would have raised eight thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars from residents. And three thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars from out of towners for a total of twelve thousand five hundred dollars in membership fees for the year. This year, for donations in lieu of fees, not even counting all the nutrition donations, we have raised forty thousand four hundred and twenty-seven dollars. We've raised five times, four times, the amount by waiving fees. And that includes out of town residents, A, because they're a smaller portion of us. And B, because I I feel strongly that if we rate, if we say it's going to be five or ten dollars, depending on whether or not you're a resident. Then people are going to pay five or ten dollars, there'll be some folks who are generous, so we'll throw a twenty instead or whatever, but. When you leave it open to people to pay what they want, A, it entices people of lower incomes who maybe can't afford anything, they can't even afford the five dollars a year. To join us anyway and enjoy our activities and services. And B, quite honestly, for lack of a better term, if it ain't broke, don't fix it, our programs are full, our building is full. People are enjoying our services, I don't see any reason to change it now, um, so that's my spiel on that. I know the out of town thing can be about, they're not putting any money into us, but they're using us. Newington residents go to other senior centers too, it's kind of a cooperative collaborative that we all have, we all work together on these types of things.
So I know from the the feedback session, um, people didn't like that the outer counters didn't have any. Fees because if we went to some, we went to another towns, they'd have to pay the fee. And I explained that we raised more money by not charging a fee, that we can't really control the other people's budgets, like that's up to them. My question is, because I didn't know it was that much of a difference between donations. Um, my question is, do you have track or do you have any knowledge of how much the donation is based on if you were a resident or a non-resident?
Well, when we receive, when we, and at the end of June or mid-June, we'll put out all the um renewal notices for people. Um, and when they return, obviously, the information is on the spreadsheet, uh, on their form that says whether they are resident or non-resident. And then we write in how much they've donated, if anything, I, there's not like a central. We have a database of all of our members and I could sort them by members and non-members, but I don't think that particular database is going to tie how much they donated to it. I just think that the vast majority of our membership is in town. And I just think that charging that, whatever it may be, like I said, it's going to keep some people alive, who maybe can't afford it and would be ashamed to say, I can't afford this. And it just, is it worth? I don't know, I don't really, is it worth alienating people who come here and enjoy our services? By charging them, if, again, if they're, we're charging them ten, but they're giving us twenty now, why are we going to charge them ten?
That's why I asked you.
Yeah, right, yeah, we're, we're, you know, we are a town department, we're a municipal department, that's obviously going to, there are many. Um, services that are only available to town residents, such as social work. And um transportation that only are available to Newington residents, I don't see, the out of towners really don't pose any problem, I just don't see any reason to change what's working right now.
I mean, it's amazing how different those numbers are, I mean, when you said that it was forty thousand dollars in donations. It compared to what you would get if you charged the fees. Uh, do you think there was anything out of the ordinary in terms of people making kind of special donations to the town?
No, um.
Or is that?
It's been pretty steady over the past couple of years, we did say that when we started this in twenty twenty, it started to wane, if people stopped donating, then yeah, we would definitely want to reimplement some fees. Well, we're about on track where we were last year, and don't forget, people are donating to our nutrition too, on top of it, we have received thirty-two thousand dollars in nutrition donations to date. So that doesn't include our, you know, most recent, so that's through April eleventh, so, um. So people are being, people are generous and I think they enjoy our services, so they're going to donate.
You know, that's not untrue, because my grandson and my neighbor's granddaughter. Had a lemonade stand and they were going to donate it to, I don't know, cancer or something. And they didn't have a charge, so people would come by and they would give them. A cookie and lemonade, and they would say, how much? And they, they said, it's free, we just would like a donation for whatever their their group was. And they were getting five and ten dollar bills. If they had asked for a dollar, they probably would have gotten a dollar, so it's just.
And we do charge for fitness membership, it's still, I think, the best deal you can get out there, twenty-five dollars for residents.
Yeah.
Or forty-five for non-residents for the year, use of our of our gym, which will expand to the evenings, once we, you know, implement our evening hours too.
I agree with you, and it's almost like if it's not.
Especially when it's not that much of a, that big of a difference.
But it, you know, it doesn't need to be decided until next month, so you know, if there's any thoughts or questions in the interim.
You, do you think this is a little bit? But like, back as far as the nutrition program, I know that we're assuming like people from Elmwood. Their options, I believe, were told they could go to Bishop's Corner or come to us. Um, now we have an issue with supplies. I'm wondering if we could, since they probably will never go back to having a meal thing there, they just never have enough people. Can we possibly contact? Can we possibly contact Elmwood and see if they have some supplies they could give to us? Because we're getting tight on that.
Sure, we, oh gosh, I have to look up an email, but I actually had to do some demographics for one of our grant applications about which. Um, towns people come to lunch for that aren't Newington residents. I'm gonna need to find it in email to you, because we do have a fair number of out-of-town folks who come to our lunches. Many of which are from West Hartford, which I believe one of their programs was eliminated altogether, one of the nutrition programs. And another one was cut back as severely as ours. Uh, we get a lot, a couple from Hartford, a couple from New Britain, a couple from Plainville. And a bunch from Weathersfield, so Weathersfield will have experienced some cuts as well. Um, I will say, we did a survey out to lunch members to ask if for three dollars, if they'd be willing to pay if. Four, five or six, is that what it said, Ed? Dollar donation rather than a three dollar donation. We had very mixed results. A lot of people said, no, we, we can't pay it. We can't afford it. We wouldn't be willing to pay it. So again. It's voluntary, so if people, even if we raised the fee to five dollars for lunch and it's voluntary, people can't pay it, they can't pay it. It's gonna turn people away. People are gonna be ashamed or embarrassed that they can't afford it and they're not gonna come back. That's what many, many, many studies have shown. So. You know, it's tough. Money's tight for everybody. If we could provide a little bit of a free service to people and, you know, we're lucky that we are. Well-funded by the town council. Um, the biggest asset is that our staff is funded via the town budget. Um, as opposed to say like Parks and Recreation where they have a fund where they're, they charge program fees, because they have to pay their own salaries, expenses, right? We don't have to do that. So that's why we're able to offer for things for free or low cost. Many sponsors, many donors, many people who do in-kind donations have come to free programs for us. Um, you know, there's just so many different places that we pull our resources from.
Okay, I have a question. I know that, you know, for, that people volunteer to put in and that. The donation is like three dollars for, for lunch or whatever. And I know that you too, if I'm, if I remember correctly, that money used to get kicked back to CRT.
Right.
So I'm assuming since CRT is only providing lunch for two days a week.
They're only getting the donations on those two days, and the other ones are coming back.
Correctly, I think the donation for the month or the collection for a month was under two hundred dollars that went back to CRT.
Right.
Nothing compared to the number of people that come in and have lunch on a daily basis. And if everybody was paying the three dollars, it would make.
It would make a bigger.
It would make a huge difference.
Yeah.
Um, I don't know, maybe I, and maybe I'm gonna sound mean, but I worked in collections for forty years. And you can't even go to McDonald's for five dollars and whatever. So, I mean, it's great that the town's given money and there's fundraisers and things like that, but I think it's. Eventually, the things are gonna collide, because as said, funding is getting cut. Or the money's not available, that it may come down that it may not be something that can be volunteer.
Right.
That you may have to set a four dollar cost and. That's what you, that's what you contribute for the lunch. And granted, there may be people that. Say they can't afford it, but maybe they can afford. Yeah, I'm probably being very cynical and just because of my background. But I mean, it's, you know, it's just, I think, you know, you, you can do all these things, but eventually. Every pot and every corporate or every business in town that's helped and contributes. I think you'll reach a point where they get, you know, like, they're gonna be like sucked dry, so to speak. Because their costs are going up and whatever, so.
Sure.
I mean, it may be something, maybe not necessarily next month or even next year, but I think. Eventually, things are gonna have to come into maybe a hard number. That this is what we have to do because we have no other alternative in order to keep a flow, you know, but.
No, I, I don't think that's cynical at all. Um, the Meals on, anything that's under the Older Americans Act, um, federal, the Elderly Nutrition Act, which is the Meals on Wheels. And our two days of CRT lunches, that falls under the, it has to be the voluntary three dollars, because that's the federal program. We can do whatever we want with our other three days. Um, and that's one of those things that we're like continually assessing, like Josie's always running numbers and spreadsheets. And if it comes to the point where those two things do collide, then we have some tough decisions to make for sure. Um, because, like you said, the wall can run dry at any time, you know. Um, we have pretty robust right now with our donations and our sponsorships and our grant funding, but. It won't be forever. So yes, I, something that we are aware of and people that I am.
I agree, I agree with that, but also especially too, I didn't know that it was for non-residents. So. If you're gonna charge anybody, I would definitely start with the people from out of town.
Okay, so going back to the Federal Nutrition Act, you can't. It has to be, anybody can go to any cafe, if you're sixty or, and you have, if you filled out a registration for the federal nutrition program. You can go to anywhere in the state that offers it, as long as you're age sixty and over. So you can't turn away out-of-towners and you can't charge them more. Again, for, and that's, and Meals on Wheels is only for Newington residents, but for in-person lunches, it could be anybody. Um.
That's just the two days.
Those are the two days. The other days, yes. Again, I have a little bit of a issue with doing that, because we're a community organization, but. We had to make those decisions and then yes. Um, the people that we're looking at are from lower income areas. Which may or may not affect their personal finances, but it's definitely a consideration.
I'm seeing, because I work, it is like, the people that sign up and don't show. And someday.
Wow, okay, sorry. I have to get a charger, it's okay.
Some days, it's a bit. That's money that we're spending, you know. And I know that on Meals on Wheels, if you don't show up, I guess it's three times, like if. You, you say you're supposed to be home for a meal and you're not there, they kick you off that program.
They don't. They say they will, but they don't, because usually it's a hospitalization or some legitimate reason why a homebound person isn't coming to the door. It's not just because they went out for. To, you know, to hang out with their friends that day. But we do obviously make sure that they're okay, and if they continue to not, you know, that we would consider their program status. Um, yes, we are aware that there is an increased number of people who are signing up for lunches and not showing up. And that's obviously a huge waste. So Barbara's on vacation, which is very well deserved. When she gets back, that's, we're gonna address that. We're gonna address it with the people, the specific people who are the repeat offenders, and we're going to address it in general by reminding people about the importance of showing up if you sign up.
And even like some people, I'll see, because like, they, after they eat, we go throw away stuff. And there's some people, like, I'll look and see their dish. And they hardly ate anything, or they ordered from the coffee shop. And it's like, the menu's out there. If you know you don't like fish on Wednesday. Don't sign up for. They just sign up and then we're throwing a meal away and we're paying a lot of money for it. So I think.
I don't know how we would address that, with like so-and-so to say like, hey, you're not eating your lunch. Because there's reasons why people may not have a big appetite or whatever, but I agree, it is a waste and something that, you know, we can look into, who might address.
I think when Barbara comes back, you and Barbara could maybe announce to the public out there. That, uh, number one is you, if you're gonna sign up, then you need to show up because we're wasting. We need to let the public know they're wasting money and we're struggling trying to get money.
Yes, we already have plans to do that.
You know, struggling to do that, so some of that will stop.
It's something we have to address every couple of years, regardless of where the food's coming from, so.
Okay. Building update.
Um, let's see, so they recently did the, you know, semi-annual deep cleaning of the building. Um, the garden is ready and planted and being planted now, the waters, and, and we had our engineering department come out. And survey the um, water mains under our lot and then that go down that way, I guess. Down the hill and towards, um, towards the road, just to kind of, we actually found out we've been really lucky that we've only had those two.